This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so I'm gonna call to order a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen at 6:32 on Thursday, the 26th of March. So, thank you, thanks for all for joining us. And Mike Tomato, our land use agent, for moderating this meeting for us. This is a new avenue for all of us. So I'm glad to see your faces. Glad to see everybody's doing well and we're gonna get going. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak later on in the meeting. So there'll be an opportunity then and we'll kind of tell you how that goes. Alright, so the first item on our agenda is a Public Works update. And I believe Troy, our Public Works Director is on the line.
Let me, let me just unmute him.
Okay, thank you.
Where is he? There is.
Hear me?
Yep, we can.
Okay, alright. Okay, so here I go. Roadside mowing is still going on around town. We started grading the dirt roads depending on the weather. Sweeping has started around town. We installed a new glass window in the assessor's office. We've been patching holes around town, digging out waterways around town. We assisted with helping Maureen block off the basketball court and the playscapes. We dug a drain out in the park and we also did some tightening and some repair on the playscape for her yearly inspection. I'd like to welcome Joe Chickie. He's our new Assistant Transfer Station Operator at the transfer station. And a little bit up there with the transfer station, we can get everybody to kind of keep their social, social distance for the guys and the operators that are up there. Right now, I hope no one takes offense, but please, it's not a social club. Just please drop your trash off and, you know, carry on until these times can get better. And another thing is, is please don't throw your trash on the side of the road. We're not accepting tires right now or refrigerators due to the hand-to-hand exchange. But we've seen a lot of tires on the road and some more trash. So if we can just kind of hold off on that easy, it just makes our jobs harder for us to go pick it up when we can be doing other things. And that's about it.
So Troy, maybe it's something we can look at as we go further into this, how we might be able to manage some of that. And I did have, I saw some comments on social media about the social distancing there and people noticing a lack thereof and offering us some suggestions. So at any point if anyone has anything they want to share with us, this is something new to everyone, things available to the public and an essential service such as trash. But at the same time, making sure everybody stays safe and that includes our staff. So. Absolutely.
There was one comment that was made to me the other day about, you know, the parking spots, if we could separate the parking spots or if we could stop people at the gate and only let so many in at a time. Unfortunately, it's a good idea, but we just don't have the manpower and the staff to do that. So if we can kind of get people to, if they can wait in their car, somebody backs up, loads up, and so hopefully everything will kind of follow, go smooth or more or less.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. And I will mention, since our last meeting, as far as the fuel pump, I'm sorry, the diesel fuel pump at the transfer station, I'm sorry, at Public Works, that has been opened. We were able to get an extension on the agreement we had with DEP due to all of the coronavirus, excuse me, shutdowns. So that's been extended into August 20th. So we had a little bit of time. They allowed us to cut the red tag off ourselves and begin deliveries of fuel. So there is no issue with getting fuel even though we didn't meet the original March 20th agreement date that they had set. So our new, our new timeframe is in it. At our next meeting, we'll be looking at kind of finalizing those fuel pump issues. Alright, so the next item, thank you Troy, the next item is the COVID-19 update. I'll start with Stuart Cobb, who's our EMD, will share with us.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Meetings have been going on for three weeks or more. Initially, they were in-person meetings. Now everything's all virtual, mainly with the Departments of Public Health, in our case, Eastern Highlands Health District. And there's been weekly conference calls between Eastern Highlands and the State Department of Health that we've been able to listen in on. Not to sound too gloomy about this, but the Department of Health people, as of the other day, expect three waves of this virus to go through. There's one this spring, there's gonna be one in the fall, and there's one gonna be next spring. So this is not a, we're gonna get through a few weeks and it's all done with, kind of thing. They're still estimating 60 to 80% of the population are gonna get it at one point or another. And their whole goal is, I'm sure you've seen the term flatten the curve, slow down the infection rate so the hospitals have a chance to deal with what's coming. So that's what we're hearing from the Department of Health. A lot of our time has been spent trying to get resources for the fire department, specifically for the ambulance personnel of getting appropriate masks for respiratory protection, gloves, cleaning supplies. We've had limited success. We've had some donations which have been helpful. And, you know, this is certainly a unique situation, either, you know, in my memory of the World War II or the Spanish Flu of 1918 at the tail end of World War I where it was a nationwide thing. All the emergency we've had in the last 40 or 50 years, they're generally regional. There are hurricanes, power outages, tornadoes, you know, things like that. But there's always been other parts of the country that could help us. And that is not the case this time around. The masks that the state are giving out right now, which comes from their leftover from the H1N1 flu days, being issued under the advisement that they are not the higher quality N95 masks, even though they are, but they're so old and out of date, they just tend to break on them, that just, you know, it's the best we got for now. And we're looking at some other avenues and trying to find some other stuff as well. The number of the ambulance calls is not spiced yet, but it seems that my personally go out to is, you know, coughing and has, may or may not have the fever. This includes car accidents and things like that. But we're prepared, as you know, much as we're going to be on our end, to transport people to the hospital and try to keep our staff safe. If that's it, first responders limit their response or stay away from the scene and kind of hold in reserve, you know, and let the paid ambulance crew go in and try to handle it on their own. You know, there are times where we do need some help, but we're trying to limit that as much as possible. Does anybody have any questions?
John or Liza? I'll also mention, you know, our schools are closed right now until at least April 20th. And that's per another of the governor's orders. We have local businesses, our restaurants, I believe Hilltop is closed, Wellington Pizza, Wellington Pizza 2 and the River and Rail have been doing takeout. So for those who can, I encourage people to use our, support our small local businesses as, you know, as much as they can. I recognize that not everyone is in a position to, but they're certainly offering a service to us. And the Dollar General is open as well. I'll talk about the TOB a little bit. So we initially closed to the public, but remained staffed beginning last Monday, the 16th. We are still operating. We just have minimal staff in the Town Office Building. We did work last week to get devices for every staff member to be able to work from home if need be. And starting this week, we went based on guidance from the local Health Department and our EMD. We're down to one per office. So some people are working from home, offices, like the land use office, the employees there are staggering who's in and who's not. So there is still somebody available at every department. You can, you can call them or email them. Even if they're at home, they're working from home. So they're responding from, from there. So, you know, an abundance of caution is trying to keep everyone safe and everyone able to work and still able to offer the services that we need to from the town. And I froze the budget to non-essential, non-essential spending last Monday, the 16th. And we were able to keep some spending regarding the work from home setup. You know, as you know, we didn't, it's not something we typically do, able to keep the cost of that down due to working with the schools. Phil really helped us out, had some devices they were not utilizing. So we were able to utilize those for departments that didn't have their own laptop or tablet. We're still using social distancing, even with staff members on our own. The food pantry is open. It's open on a by appointment basis. So residents contact Jenny and she arranges a pickup that allows for social distancing as well as privacy for those residents coming in there. Public Works, they're still continuing to work. They are, like the rest of our staff, considered essential and able to work. Mobile Food Share will still continue to come every Wednesday from 11 to 11:30 at the Senior Center. Jenny has volunteers out there helping her that are wearing gloves. Everybody remains six feet apart using that social distancing. Our parks, for right now, River Road is still open. We've closed off the playscape and the basketball court. They really seem to be issues where people were congregating and not really following those rules that we had asked and we had set up. So, sorry, looks like I'm having some camera issues here. And I'm not sure what's happening with that. So we've closed off those and really encouraging people, if you want to be out at the park, walk around the track, use the field. Playing soccer in a group is not, is not in the best idea right now. You obviously cannot remain a safe distance from each other while playing a contact sport. So it's not recommended. And we're really trying to do everything we can not to close the park so that we can leave it open so people can still get out, get fresh air. They're encouraged to get exercise. But you really need to stay a safe distance if you're out there with your, you know, family, your children. That's one thing. But groups of people is not, is not acceptable. And today, the governor did say he wants groups no more than five at all times. So Troy or Maureen, I think they're both on this call. My understanding is that you've just, right now, we still just roped off the basketball court. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We've, we've roped off the playground and the basketball court. We go down there daily, a couple of times a day. Yesterday, we did see, you know, we had roped off the basketball court, but there ended up, there was about 15 kids playing soccer. So the last thing that I want to do is close that park. It's one of the only safe places that we have in town for some of our residents to walk. Our roads are twisty, turny and steep. We want them to be able to get down there and continue to walk. So if people can just abide by that, talk to your kids, make sure that they understand. There's other things that they can do without doing it in a group. We don't want to close the park if we don't have to.
Thank you, Maureen. For purposes of the transcription of this meeting, so anyone who speaks, I'll just ask you to say your name for, for the record. So the library is closed. They were open and staffed. So they were closed to the public but open and staffed so they could do some work. They didn't fall into the essential category as outlined in the Governor's Executive Order. So I know the Library Director, Clavel, is working with the State Library Association and they're working to see whether or not that will change at some point. So for right now, it's not even staffed, it's completely closed. And the Senior Center, Center is closed to the public as well. So were there any questions, John or Liza, about specifically to COVID-19?
As far as the library and the Senior Center, especially the library, are they, is the staff still being paid while they're closed? Or are they going on unemployment or what?
So I received a communication from the Library Director and the, between he himself and the Board Chair, that they shared with me, that they shared with their staff, that as of right now, they're still being paid. I don't know how that will change. The Library Board will take a look at that. I know they're working in that direction, but at least for the next two-week period, they will be paid.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the executive orders. I may have missed it. As to what happens to government employees who are not being utilized right now, are they still generally being paid? Or are they not? How about the people who work in the Town Office Building or?
So right now, we don't have anyone in the Town Office Building that's not working. They're either working there in the building or working from home. Beginning of April 1st, the Family First Act, it's an extension of the FMLA, will allow for two weeks paid sick leave. And we fall into that category. So if someone needed to be out for the two weeks to either care for someone because they were out themselves, or for childcare issues, they could apply for that and that would qualify. Right now, we've been able to work it so that our staff could still work and be paid. The library is sort of a different entity. They're not town employees. And I, and I know they were really hoping that they could continue to work just close to the public. And they had a lot of things that they were working on and things they're never able to do while the libraries open. So, but my understanding from speaking with Clavel on Monday, and I believe as late as Tuesday, that they were, the state was working with the State Library Association about that. So we'll look into that, John, but I don't have a clear answer going forward after these first two weeks. If they let them go, they could apply for unemployment. They would qualify.
I would really hope that we still can find something for them to do. I'd like to see them continue to be paid. How about the educational side of the house? Teachers and administrators and all that.
Right. So I would defer to the Board of Education on how they're handling their staff and employees and paid. I don't know if Mr. Stevens wants to speak on that tonight, or if we wait to see if we get some word from the Board of Ed.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Alright, anything else before I move on to the next item? Alright, Stuart, thank you. Thank you very much for your continued work. And I want to especially thank all our first responders and any of our, all of the healthcare workers that are out there. Certainly, I know we have many in our community. They're on the front lines of this. So, you know, keep them in your thoughts and considerations when, when we make choices as to whether or not we need to be out. There's a reason we're being asked to stay safe and stay home. Alright, the next item on our agenda is the 2020, 2021 budget process. So I'm gonna, I'll make a motion and then we can have some discussion. I move in accordance and keeping with the State of Connecticut Executive Orders 7B, 7C and 7I, authorizing Wellington Board of Finance to adopt a budget for the July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 fiscal year and to set a mill rate. A motion, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Liza. Any discussion?
I'm just, I'm sorry, just a minute, I gotta, my regular house phone here is.
John, you're probably one of the few who has one.
I know. Hey, Peter, you. Anyway, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. There, I will say, Mike, if this person counters right, there are only 17 people on the call. And we certainly have capabilities for several hundred people to join us. So if somebody wasn't able to get through, we'll see if we can figure out why. But there's more than enough capability. So the Governor's Executive Order 7I, it actually, it's not an option. It says the towns shall authorize their budget-making authority. And in this case, so towns who use a town meeting as their legislative body, the Board of Selectmen shall authorize their budget-making authority. And our budget-making authority in Wellington is the Board of Finance to adopt a budget and set a mill rate for the next year. So this isn't something that we have any choice on. It's something that we need to do. And our, our only role in the budget going forward is to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt a budget and set a mill rate. I will tell you that a lot of work went into that executive order, which talked about several in-person items, and this was one of them. And CCM costs and the CT COGS really worked hard on behalf of municipalities to allow us to continue our budget process. And in-person voting was, was the biggest hindrance in being able to allow everyone to do that and safely. So this will not allow them to just quick, complete a process. They're encouraging them to try to maintain the same process we would typically use, maintain the same timeframes, and actually take advantage of the 30-day extension that was allowed in executive order. So the Board of Finance going forward will have to take into account those executive orders and move forward with their process. At our referendum, typically Region 19's budget is included in there. The executive order also authorizes the region, regional Boards of Education to adopt their own budgets. So they will be doing that. And the superintendent in Region 19 reached out to me and they anticipated their April meeting, they'll be approving and adopting their budget. So it will be part of the Board of Finance's work when setting a mill rate, those dollars. But as far as a vote on a budget, it will be done by the Region 19 Board of Education, not by Wellington voters at referendum.
This is possibly the worst idea I've ever heard, to be honest with you. Referendum is our last resort to keep spending down. With no referendum, I'm afraid of what's going to happen.
I will say, John, I have faith that our Board of Finance is gonna take a look at the situation that we're in, the, the times that we're in, and then hear some of those concerns. I don't think this is something that any of us had planned for, thought could possibly happen. I actually see, look, we sent them a significant increase in a budget. I've already started taking a look at it to see, you know, what else we could do in the event. They really, they cut that back. We don't know where we'll be going forward after July 1. So, so they're gonna really have to take into account a lot of factors before they proceed with the budget. And this process, it says they still have to have a public hearing. It will be in a manner similar to this, but they still have to hold a public hearing. There still have to be discussions so people have the opportunity to be heard. It's not the most ideal of circumstances, John, but I'm not sure that, you know, we could really control in-person voting on any level right now.
Well, it's kind of scary, depending on how long this lasts. Hoping come November, we're going to have a election no matter what. I don't know what to say.
I don't disagree with you at all, John. I think it's really just an indication of the significant circumstance that we're in. And I don't at all like the idea that this is how it's happening. But I don't, we don't have an option, right, Erica? This is.
Correct.
This is what has been told to us. I wish that we could figure out some way to do it. I wish there was online voting. I wish we had some other means, but we really, we don't.
Right. So we don't have, you know, I think there are a lot of things that could be looked at going forward. We may even, you know, want to look at, we've had people ask us before about online voting. That's not something that's used. It certainly, it holds a lot of challenges. But the executive order was very clear and it said we shall authorize. So I think if this, if we were in this situation in, say, December, I don't think they would have put something into place so fast. But because every town is up against the same timelines and deadlines, to be able to move forward into our next fiscal year, it meant that we needed to have some action and then some, some, some things put into place rather quickly. And certainly, Wellington doesn't have the resources to figure out an entirely new voting system or the funding in such a short period of time. That was something that would take a lengthier amount of time. So it's not my ideal situation. I don't believe that there's anything about this that's ideal for anyone. But it allows us to continue with the budget process. And it really is going to, it's gonna be up to us in the Board of Finance to make sure that we share information with people, make sure that people have a way to see the information, to participate in the meetings, and to have their voices heard.
Well, I think I'm simply going to abstain on the vote on this simply to show my protest on it. Because there's still, I don't know. I don't really know what I'm trying to say now. I think it was wrong. It was never, as far as I know, the towns never were asked for any input. They just were told, okay, this is what it is.
Well, I will tell you, the towns, so many town leaders, you know, discussed that we had concerns about how we were going to hold town meetings, how we were going to hold referendums, and still be able to maintain all of the other orders that have been put in place, be it federal or state. And they heard all of our concerns. And certainly, some larger towns may have spoke louder than, than a small Wellington. And they're talking about, you know, larger crowds and many more people. But what these groups did was hear our concerns and work with the governor on a way that we could continue the process. But again, it was very, is made very clear to me through many discussions over the last few days since this order came out, that it doesn't mean you don't still hold a public hearing, that you don't take input from your residents. That is vital to the conversation. It, it doesn't mean that we do this and tomorrow they hold a meeting and adopt a budget. They continue with the budget process. They encourage them to stay on the same path. But I think taking, taking into account those extensions, the 30-day extension right now, gives us time to see where we're at. extensions, the thirty-day extension right now gives us time to see where we're at, where we're at as a country, where we're at as a state, um and what our fiscal needs might be depending on spending. You know, we haven't seen a, a positive case here in Wellington. It hasn't hit us um as far as um residents ill right now, but it certainly has affected our businesses and our residents who um may or may not be out of work. All right, is there any further discussion?
Uh, if, if, if I may, uh whoever's administrating this, I got a text message from uh Jim Bullock. He's on, but he's muted and can't comment. It's uh.
That is correct, that is correct, because we're not at the public. Person.
We have everybody muted.
I'm sorry?
So he, so you have him muted then?
So um, we have everybody muted except you, myself and Liza, and then anyone that we've invited um to speak at this point. So there is a chat feature to the right. If you um scroll to the top right, you'll see a little chat box.
Okay.
There's the people with the number and I don't know if everyone can hear me. If you open up that chat window and you have a question or a comment that you want to add, you can type it in there. And those comments will be part of the transcripts that correct Mike.
I think the best thing to do is when we get, you can put your question or if you wish to speak into that pop spot. And when we get to present to speak, I think we'll then go through that and give them a chance to talk or either one of you guys can read it out loud. Um, just cuz that's the spot in the meeting where that you guys take comment.
But the written chat, i- is that become part of the saved um transcript of the meeting or not necessarily?
I, I do not believe it does.
So if you type something in there you want shared, let me know. Um, just type it in there and then um I can read it and that will allow it to go into the record of the meeting. So Jim, if you have that capability, but yes, everybody is muted. No further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I shut it off.
Liza, are you and John still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, so all.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, I said I would abstain, so.
And any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. D, the Affordable Housing Plan Grant Resolution. So, Mike Tomato, our land use agent is gonna speak on this item. Mike?
Yep, so let me just bring up the uh, I did prepare a quick memo. So for those who are on the phone, I'll read my memo um to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, in twenty seventeen, the legislature passed a universal requirement that all towns in the state of Connecticut adopt and maintain an affordable housing plan. Um, until just recently, most towns have not taken this requirement seriously uh as the state did not provide any clarification on, on what the plan needed to have in it. Um, and, and so it was essentially seen as an unfunded mandate. They also didn't give an exact deadline um for when you had to have it adopted. Um, but on March sixth, the Department of Housing released a grant opportunity um which will allow about thirty towns in Connecticut to receive funding to write these plans. Um, and they'll be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis um in an amount about fifteen thousand dollars per town. There is also a bill currently being considered, although who knows, that will essentially put a deadline on it and require all towns to have it um with a specific deadline. And the state can then rank the towns that do not have one lower when it's assessing how to hand out other grant money through across the org chart of the state. So um, they've sort of set the table for, for telling you if you don't have one, you're not gonna compete as well. Um, so we're working on the grant application, but we need a resolution from the Board of Selectmen authorizing um the submission of the grant and um the appointment of a staff member to administer and file the application. There is no cost to the town to submit the application. There is no match required on the town's behalf should we be awarded the grant. So we just have to basically do it in the upcoming fiscal year. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them.
So the uh state has not provided any clarification on what the plan would be. Have they now provided such a clarification?
Well, the, the wheels got set in motion to have the grants released and then the, the state shut down because of everything going on. So I don't know when the bill may pass, which says what's in it. There's a general idea of, of the, the broad topics of what they want in the plan, but they didn't say you need to have it adopted at this point. It needs to become part of your zoning regulations or your plan of conservation or it ought to be an ordinance. They didn't give any real guidelines. They're working on that now. Um, and I suspect something will be passed, but it will be after the grant deadline because right now everything's basically on pause.
Uh, well, we're, we're, we're gonna assume, you know, that things will eventually get back to normal. And if that happens, then um what uh, what would be the effect of this? You know, we're gonna put these in the regulations. What would uh, what would it change on our regulations?
So this is, at this point, a separate plan. It's um, it, it's something similar to a feasibility study. Um, so it, it would not, it doesn't make something that's not allowed now. This is not, this is not a plan for how Wellington is gonna turn all of its open parcels into affordable housing. Uh, this is a plan to deal with the fact that in the state of Connecticut, affordable housing projects are exempt from zoning per state statute. And um, the town does not have any regulatory authority over those projects. Um, and so this is a plan which would basically have the conversation about maybe there are certain areas of town which already have affordable housing and we would wanna get that on, you know, get that into the plan so we can take credit for that, cuz the state requires that the town have ten percent of the housing stock be affordable. So it's basically going through the process and having that conversation so that if an application did come before the town, we would have something to fall back on. Wellington is in a unique spot because it's rural and it does not have water and sewer. So we have a very limited ability to sustain a, a project like what you think of when you think affordable housing. But it doesn't change the fact that the state has mandated that we need to still have a plan.
There's the state mandate that we have ten percent affordable housing. And if so, do we?
The state says that if you do not have ten percent of your housing stock deed restricted as affordable, then, then an affordable housing application can come into your town and they are basically exempt from any land use regulatory process. If you meet the ten percent, then you don't get to sort of skip that. Um, a town can say, no, no, we have our ten percent. Now we expect you to meet our standards set forth in the zoning regs. But if a town does not have the ten percent, then they, then they need to basically come in, file an application, show that they're not gonna be creating any safety hazards, and they don't need to meet any of the stuff that's listed in the zoning regs, and that's a state statute.
So do we, what counts as affordable housing? Do we have any in Wellington?
Uh, I don't know what the current numbers are in Wellington, but it's essentially, don't quote me on it. It's gotta be number one deed restricted for at least, I think it's twenty years. And it's gotta be deed restricted as affordable, which is a, a formula that's done town by town. And I believe it's, it's a rent based on uh thirty percent of eighty percent of the area median income. Um, so essentially that changes depending on where you go. But it's gotta be deed restricted, so a house that is being rented to a family at a low rate while it may qualify, be, if it's not a deed, if it's not deed restricted, it doesn't count towards our ten percent.
This sounds like a true bureaucratic boondoggle, if you, if you want my opinion. Uh, so we're going to ask for a grant which would give us a plan, which would not really change a whole lot, I guess, right?
But Mike, did I hear you say that they could use this as another piece of criteria for other grants? If, if we had this plan, it might play into whether or not we received funding for other things?
When you look at some of the stuff in the state P O C D and some of the other guidance that's published on um O P M's website, they, they're sort of saying that, that towns that don't adopt these plans maybe essentially fall, fall lower when they're ranking towns that are competing for other grants. So really what we're doing is, is we're asking to, to build, to, to create this plan for the town using state money. We have to have it regardless, so we, we can't, we're not, I'm not sort of asking you for permission to have the plan because we have to have the plan. I'm just saying, let's use state money so that we can go through this process and make it as, as involved as we can because we'll be able to use fifteen thousand dollars that the state gave us. But either way, once they drop that deadline, we're gonna have to create that plan regardless. But I agree with you, John. Yes, th- this is not going to change a whole lot for Wellington because the unique characteristics of town do not put us in a position where we can have these large-scale projects and because the, our, our infrastructure doesn't support it.
And it would cost fifteen thousand dollars to create this plan?
Uh, the grant amounts that the Department of Housing, the way that they've structured it, is that the, the, they're gonna be provided fifteen thousand dollars per town. If we don't use that, we have to give it back, but we can't, you, it can't cost more, but.
So I will uh move a resolution resolving, authorizing the submission of an Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Grant Application to the Connecticut Department of Housing. Whereas the state of Connecticut's Department of Housing has made monies available for communities seeking assistance to prepare and adopt an affordable housing plan pursuant to provisions of Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty J. And whereas Wellington is required to prepare and adopt an affordable housing plan. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Will, Town of Wellington make application to the state for fifteen thousand dollars to support the development of this required plan. Now therefore be it resolved by the Wellington Board of Selectmen that it has been made aware of the requirements related to the submission of such a grant application and that the filing of such a grant application seek state financial assistance from the Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Assistant Program by the town in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars is hereby approved and that Michael Tomato, the town's zoning agent, is authorized to file such application and provide additional documentation and/or information as necessary and to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for financial assistance in such a, if such an agreement is offered. Dated uh the twenty sixth, day of work, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Motion on the table, second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Go on back and I'll um, and I'll vote aye on this one.
All right, so we'll try that again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, seeing uh unanimous, motion carries. All right, Mike, uh, and as this goes forward, if you could um get back to us and let us know where you are in the process with an update. All right. Next item on the agenda. And just so you all know, um, those who are on the phone, on the video, Mike Tomato is also the one moderating this meeting for us. So he's pulling double duty here. All right, so taking us back to tax refunds. I will make a motion to refund, and I think we have them here, Mike. Yeah, uh thirty-two dollars and seventeen cents to V W Credit Leasing LTD on a certificate of correction.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll move to refund, scroll to the next one, if I stay in over here. I moved to refund a hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents to Goodell Living Trust for an overpayment.
Second.
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And last, I will, lastly, I will move to refund forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents to Heidi Mizak uh for an overpayment.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Mike, can you see if Lori is on the call? I think she said she might not get back until seven thirty. All right.
No, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, so the next item, um, what is treasurer appointment? Um, if you recall, we appointed Tish Ignatowicz, our, our temporary treasurer or interim treasurer um until such time as a permanent treasurer came forward. Um, we received a letter, uh, an email, you'll see there, on March fourteenth from Lori Semperbaum um expressing her uh interest and willingness to serve as the um Wellington Town Treasurer as well as an endorsement from the Willey, uh Wellington Democratic Town Committee. So I'll make a motion and then we can um have discussion. So I'll move to appoint Lori Semperbaum as Treasurer for the Town of Wellington effective Monday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty, expiring on November second, twenty twenty-one, um which is the next municipal election. Is there a second? Seconded by Liza. All right, uh, discussion. So Lori is here with us. Uh, Lori, I don't know if you want to speak to this, to share. Um, typically, we would make the appointment effective the date of our meeting. I went on a little bit longer because we're in um such unusual times, just figuring out when Lori could get into our building and settled. It is in a, as simple a process as it was several weeks ago. Lori, can you hear me? Speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um. Yeah, first of all, I don't have any video. I tried to do the video and, and it said I, I couldn't get in on the video. Anyway, um, I just, I feel like I need, I need and want to help the town out at this time. I know that this has been a problem area. And I, you know, not a problem area. We've had some great people, but it's difficult to find people in the town that have the skill set. I, I think there's gonna be a learning curve for me, but I'm willing to step up and help the town.
Lori, um, I, I thank you for stepping up. It is certainly, um, we, we've been fortunate in our treasurers in the past, but it's not an easy role for people to step into. Um, so this would effectively um end the agreement we had with Tish uh moving forward. Um, and Lori taking on this role would certainly have the benefit of um working in an office with two previous treasurers who I, I think could be a valuable asset to her. And certainly it, it frees things up as we move forward with still the change in our financial software. That's still moving forward um beginning April first. It's just gonna look a little bit different um, the training than, than we had first hoped. Um, and I know Tish has done um a wonderful job stepping in and helping getting things kind of up to speed and up to par in that department. So I, I, I wanna thank her for really um coming forward and taking on that role. She knew she couldn't do all of it or, or any length of time, nor did she want to. Um, but she saw a need and stepped forward and I really appreciate that.
Um, uh Erica, um. Jim Bullock. Jim Bullock had wished to uh address this particular issue. Would it be possible to have him? Uh, he's dialed in. Would it be possible to have his mic open so he could speak to this?
Liza, are you opposed to having someone speak to this?
Um. I I mean, it. No, but at the same time, I mean, we didn't have an opportunity for President to speak at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
Um, it's sort of, again, goes away from what we're hoping to sort of do is have the beginning and then the end. Have opportunities for President to speak.
Right.
I guess maybe since we didn't have an opportunity in the beginning, we can make an allowance at this moment.
Um, I'm I'm okay with him speaking on the item that's on the agenda currently.
So the treasurer appointment?
Yeah, he's dialed in. I don't know. Um, Mike, would you be able to tell who?
Yeah, I think he's caller three, so I'm gonna, if everybody else can just hang tight, I'm gonna unmute caller three and we'll see if that's him. And uh so Jim, if you can hear me in a quick second, just uh state your name, and if not, we'll go on through the rest of the call list.
I can hear you, so I guess I am on caller number three.
Okay.
Uh, so I will just confine my uh comments to just the treasurer appointment. Um, so I I I think uh Lori is uh wasn't capable of handling this appointment. Uh she certainly has the experience. And uh the uh independent uh personality that this job requires. My biggest comments have always been on the treasurer position that they enforce the separation of duties. Meaning the treasurer just focuses on moving the money and reconciling bank statements and then having, of course, uh the accounting department reconciling and doing the journal entries. And that's the most important thing. And that that way, uh nobody has that uh giant temptation of, you know, they're handling millions of dollars. You don't want them reconciling the books, making the ba- banks transactions, you know, making the the journal entries. You don't want them doing all those things all at once. Um, so I I think as long as uh Lori ensures that separation, and I'm happy to speak with you separately on this at another point in time, I think she would be an excellent candidate uh for this position.
Thank you, John. Uh Jim.
Certainly.
You're not interchangeable because too many Js. All right. All right. So any other discussion?
I I just want to say, I want to thank Lori for stepping up. I uh have a lot of confidence in her, and I think she'll do a very good job. So thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, um uh for answering uh answering the call. Um, and so seeing no further discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor of Lori Semperbaum as treasurer signify.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And no abstentions? Okay.
May I may, may I have one question?
Yes, you may.
Um, I just want to make sure there's no conflict with the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I know things are really crazy right now. But I am elected to the Board of Assessment Appeals, and uh if that's a conflict, um, I can step down from that, but I was elected, and so I just want to make sure. I think the planning and zoning alternate position is not an issue, but I I'm not sure about the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Okay, we will make sure that that is um that there was none. Um, I apologize. I have been working here from home um because I've not been well uh this week. So all of my notes are there, but I believe the last um conversation I had with our attorney is that it was not an issue.
Thank you.
But we will double check. So Lori, you will just need to be um sworn in with the town clerk, and we'll make sure you can get that done from six feet apart.
Okay.
All right. Um, and I believe that is the last um item. We, I apologize. We do have one other item. Item G um is our next meeting. Our next regular meeting is Monday, April sixth. So barring the need for a special meeting, um we're gonna try to get back to our regular meeting schedule. It will be in this method. Um, and and go forward with this new normal until we can all be in the same room at the same time. So with that, I will um open up to present to speak. So if there's anyone present to speak, Mike will unmute everyone. And he's, if you um, if you have a computer screen, you'll see his note. If not, um if you wish to speak, state your name before speaking. Um, all participants will be unmuted, so uh make sure there's only one person speaking at a time. So all.
Okay, so just just for the sake of making this a little bit easier to manage, there are a few of you that are participating via video. And so if if any of you want to speak, sort of nod or raise your hand, and I'll unmute you one by one. And um, okay, see some of you are. So that way there, we can kind of go through the video callers, and then we'll go to audio, and I think it'll be a little easier. So uh as Erica said, just state your name when you start to speak um so that the transcription will pick it up and um we'll take it from there. So I'm going to uh unmute the first person who's in here as Ashley. Uh one second, uh let me see if I can unmute you. Okay, I think you're live.
Okay, um actually, um Ashley's my daughter, Emily Lane Newcombe, twenty eighth Fermi Road, Wellington, Connecticut. Um, I sent a hard copy shortly before the meeting. Um. I, if I, my letter read, if I understand the governor remarks, governor's remarks the other day correctly and from uh Erica's discussion before, I guess I did. He disenfranchised the voters of Wellington and other towns. Our town budget has a approximately eleven percent increase, the school budget approximately a three percent increase. The future budget plans include, if one looks in the C I P list, a two point nine million dollar addition to the firehouse, a four point seven million dollar new firehouse, and currently in the budget is two hundred thousand for deposit on land for forty five million dollars school. I don't think we need and we can't afford. To assume that the majority of Wellington voters are okay with this is to be arrogant and dictatorial. Wellington voters deserve to participate, to vote how we spend our money. One option would be for each voter to receive a ballot by mail. I realize that might be too high tech for some people to comprehend. Everybody always goes to the thought of, well, it's, you know, we can do laptop or something. We know everybody can't do that, but everybody does have a mailbox. And the tax bills do get to us via that mailbox. So I um understand this edict came down from above. I I I feel that um one of our de- dearest liberties has been stripped from us just um in a per- perfunctory manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
I'm done. Yep.
Okay.
And Elaine, I did get your email just before this meeting, but when I saw you on, um I kind of thought you might speak to it. Otherwise, I would have addressed it in.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, but it it I did notice, I only saw the agenda right before the meeting and noticed the present to speak was only at the end, whereas the it's been uh the format to go uh beginning and end. So anyway, um.
Our our format will go back to its typical format going forward. Um, as you can imagine, none of us were quite sure how any of this was going to go. So uh we'll get back to the present to speak prior to, and um anytime if you don't think you can be available at that meeting or on a call like this, um send your comments that you'd like um read into the record, and then we'll do some.
Okay, since this was a special meeting, um I I'd be curious, how many people um have att- have have attended the meeting? Do you have, do you, can you tell how many people turned out for this or?
It looks like there are nineteen people on the call um altogether. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
That's that's pretty good. You're at some of our meetings. That's a pretty good number.
It is. I I I'm I'm heartened because I had no way of telling um what the attendance was from here. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, Mike.
Yep, so I see um. Michelle Cunningham, do you have anything you'd like to say? I'll unmute you if you do. Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to um thank the selectmen for making the meeting available, the go-to meeting as well as call. I think it went really well, and I hope you're gonna make this available to all of the towns, boards, and commissions so that we can continue as much as possible. But I was very pleased with how quickly this this went and how we processed was to use. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't uh, what about uh Mr. Stevens? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself and go for it.
Perfect, thank you. Phil Stevens, Superintendent of Schools. First, uh big shout out, Mike D'Amato. You uh made this happen tonight, so thank you for your efforts in getting uh everyone on. And it's working, and what a meeting. Nineteen people, did you say? That's a lot.
Yes, that's awesome.
It is. Um, John, I want to respond to you about the Board of Education. Uh, the board that is paying all their employees currently and everybody's working. Um, it sounds crazy that everyone's working, but everyone is. At this point in time, the teaching staff is doing their their interim learning plan with students at home. Uh, our paraprofessionals are all doing professional development, uh a minimum number of hours per week. Our custodians are still in the buildings, and some of them are on rotating schedules so they can maintain their social distancing. And depending on how um, you know, as this moves forward, they may start to start cleaning work uh if possible. And secretaries are in and out of the buildings as well. When they're not in the buildings, they're working from home, and they have all the phones rolled to their their home phone. Our administrators are working remotely, um but they are actually using Zoom as a platform. We've had meetings with all of our staff. Um, and then lastly, our food services uh is serving meals to all of our students in there. They are uh in three days a week. So all of our staff is still being paid. Um, and that was uh an agreement I I reached with the board chair. Um, and all of our staff is still working.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Phil.
And and Phil, thank you and all the staff for all of the wonderful work that they're doing. As a parent, a working parent home during this time, it is very challenging. Um, I think we see on Facebook all the the, you know, the memes of people saying, now they see why teachers deserve a million dollars a year. Um, which was never in doubt for me. I want you to know that. Um, but I I I do want to echo, the staff has, you know, everybody has reached out. Um, you know, not just the the students, like primary teachers, but we've had reach outs from multiple um staff at the at the schools. So thank everybody for us. Um, because this is obviously challenging for the parents and and challenging for the kids, but uh it's good to have some normalcy and and the connection with the school still. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. I I will say that the staff is working incredibly hard. Uh, and it's, this is, has been a challenge for, especially in the short timeframe. Um, but it's going well. We'll we'll continue to add more to our programming. Um, it's it's definitely unique, and we know the the challenges that everyone's facing, whether it's, you know, the some of our teaching staff that are trying to work with their own family members or care for, you know, sick family members. It's it's a challenge all around, so it's it's a battle we're fighting together, and and we'll continue to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Phil, I I would be remiss if I didn't, um I I mentioned it before, but um you and and um your staff really have made it possible for us to be able to conduct um regular business from the town hall outside of the town hall by sending our employees home um and not having to incur expenses of purchasing devices. So um, thank you. It speaks to the relationship between the schools and the town in Wellington that we're really, when we need to band together, so I I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, um so I think we're good with video. I did see in the chat that uh Jim Bullock has some other things he'd like to comment on, so I'm gonna go with him first because I I know where he is. Um, I see he's unmuted, so Jim, if you can hear us, uh you're you're uh you're live on the air.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, so uh just a uh comment on the uh the budget process. We still have plenty of time to actually put together a budget. At least a co- a couple of months by my reckoning. Uh, and and obviously, you can you can compress that a little if you admit more than once a week. Um, so I I just encourage everybody to take that time, and I want to e- uh echo uh uh Ms. Newcombe's uh comments to uh there are other means of of voting, absentee ballot that works very well uh by postal uh service. Uh, I've used it myself when I've had to travel on business. So I just want to, you know, encourage that we keep those options open or remind people that we have those options. We don't have to have high tech. Uh, there are ways to go do this. Um, that so that's, I want to make sure those comments are out. Also, uh uh the Affordable Housing Grant Application. Uh, I know we said there wasn't any cost at this point in time. We're just making an application. But I I always wonder, you know, like, you know, grant administration is, takes time. It takes effort. It it takes accounting. And I'm most concerned about our very heavily taxed uh accounting office that's, you know, again, has a new treasurer. They're gonna try to bring up the speed, uh is trying to bring on a new accounting software, uh is trying to help the library uh out with their accounting uh that, you know, are we just biting off more uh than what we can chew, and now there's another grant we have to administer? So I just, you know, remind everybody that, you know, please consider that uh when you're you're thinking about this grant administration. I I just want to make sure we don't, we don't bite off too much. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so I don't, I think that's it for the video. So uh I'm going to now basically unmute everybody. If you don't want to say anything or you've already spoken, you can re-mute yourself. Um, and then we'll kind of just work through one at a time, and we'll make sure we get to everybody. It might seem a little bit chaotic, but most of the people on the list here, I think, have already spoken. So uh I'm gonna click this button. Um, and everybody, unless you've chosen to be muted, um you should be ready. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I do, yes.
Just sit down by yourself for the record.
Peter Lo Tenchich, ninety seven Trask Road.
Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. I apologize. I had a little bit of difficulty getting on, so I missed the item C that I was anxious to listen to on what the budget process was moving forward. Just listening to some of the comments from Elaine and Jim, I'm gonna assume that uh the that you're entertaining not having a budget hearing, a town budget meeting or referendum. I hope that's not the case. Um, and I'm hoping that we move forward all of our normal activities. Um, so that the townspeople can decide on the budget as we always have via our legislative process. Um, I'm at a loss because I'm not sure exactly what you're doing. Um, but I'm hoping that through some means, as Jim suggested, extending the budget process or alternative means of manual ballots, that um we have access to voting and deciding on the budget. And I I, if you can answer me uh whether or not that's the case or not, I'd appreciate it.
I I'll answer you. Um, I'll answer that for you, Peter, and then tell you that when we're done with this meeting, the recording um and the video will be available as well as the transcription, so you'll be able to go back and hear the discussion that took place.
Many thanks, Erica.
Unfortunately, Governor's um Executive Order seven I, um number thirteen, actually um says that, and I'll read it for you, suspension of in-person budget adoption requirements for municipalities, notwithstanding any contrary provision of the Connecticut General Statutes, including Title Seven or any special act, municipal charter, or ordinance that conflicts with this order, the legislative body of a municipality or in a municipality where the legislative body is a town meeting, the Board of Selectmen shall authorize the budget-making authority within said municipality to adopt a budget for the July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty one fiscal year, and to set a mill rate sufficient. And and it goes on. Um, so that the shall in there makes it clear us that we have to um authorize our budget-making authority. And it suspends those in-person meetings as far as in-person public hearing, voting, town meeting, and referendum. What it doesn't do, Peter, is say there isn't a public hearing that takes place. And they're very clear and we still need to hold those public hearings. The way, the manner in which that is done is different now. So it would be using this forum as a way for residents to speak to the Board of Finance at a public hearing, at that budget hearing. So there will be opportunity, but unfortunately, the motion we made is in, I apologize, the motion I made is in keeping with the executive order that says we shall authorize our budget-making authority to adopt the budget and set a mill rate. So that is what we voted on this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other callers that wanted to speak?
So again, I'm gonna just unmute everybody. Again, if you've muted yourself on your side, you will have to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. I don't see any other folks that are participating by call, but now's the time.
All right, seeing none, I'll move on to Good and Welfare. I do see in the list of participants. Hello, Randy from All the Way in Michigan. Hope things are well there. It's good to see you participating in our meetings. So, Good and Welfare, I'm gonna take the time, Mike, if you could. Can I share the screen?
Yep.
Right. So first, I want to mention, you know, these are challenging, uncertain times for all of us. And I need to take a moment to thank each and every member of the staff for stepping up to the plate and working hard to keep business moving and adapting to our new norms so that the Town of Wellington still had services made available to them. So our staff has been wonderful. Novus Insight, who was our IT, they were instrumental along with the schools in getting us set up for our new work-from-home model in a very short period of time with minimal resources. And Kevin specifically on the town side worked tirelessly last week to get us prepared. I need to recognize that.
Sorry, Erica, excuse me. Do you want me to, you want me to share? Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, just if you could pause, I'll send it over to you. I just want to make sure that it goes. So I'm gonna make you the presenter and
So if I do this, you can see my screen now. There. Okay.
Yep, so we can, I see the, we can see the Town of Wellington's webpage.
Okay. And I want to thank Maureen Parcell, who's really working hard to keep, you know, our parks open for people to use. So if we could just be cognizant of how we're using them and keeping that social distance, that physical distance, so that we can continue to keep our park open, that's important. I know that this is taking a strain on everyone in our community, but everyone's really risen to the challenge. I want to point out on our website, and forgive me, this is a if folks go to the Wellington homepage, which is willingtonct.org, and right on the homepage, I apologize. You can probably just see my homepage, but I have to move some things around. There's a COVID-19 info button. If you click on that, you'll see where you can get information specifically regarding the emergency situation we're in now. There's a link to the Eastern Highlands Health District here. This second site will take you to the Connecticut's coronavirus page where there are infinite resources, frequently asked questions. You can get information that's typically loaded up around 4:00 PM daily that will tell you where we are. And then the numbers and data there. There is also, and if you scroll down, there are links to the CDC and what you should do if you believe you are infected. Again, if someone is sick, please stay home. You know, contact your doctor and heed the warning so that we can do our part to stay safe and stay home. I want to continue to mention that our Human Services Department is still working and available for resources. So if someone believes they have a need and needs assistance, reach out to her. There is, you can reach every department here. You click on all departments. Of course, it's not opening fast enough. There, you can scroll down and get a list of every, we'll take you to every department where there are email links and phone numbers here on the right-hand side. So I encourage our residents to take advantage of that as well as nope. We'll get this new technology down just as soon as we're done using it, right? Back here in the COVID-19, under CT Alert, if you have not already, I encourage our residents to sign up for the CT Alert sites, sign up, whether we use it as the town for emergency responses or they utilize it from the state. The governor did utilize that. Excuse me, one time this weekend, and if he does it again, this is where you can get that information. Also, if folks want to get our public notices, hey, this new technology gives us the opportunity for me to show someone. Come here to our homepage, over here to subscribe to E-Alerts. Put your information in and then scroll down and check off all of the things you want to get information about, so you can stay up to date on things that are coming out of the Town of Wellington. So, and then I just want to remind you all to stay connected to your family and friends via phone, video, social media. While we need to stay socially, I'm sorry, while we need to stay physically apart, it's important that we stay socially connected. Especially our vulnerable population, our seniors. We want to remember that, you know, call them, check on them, check on your neighbors. Even if you can't go outside and it's talking to them through a window, you know, a wave, it's good. It's good to stay connected socially. It's important for us to stay connected socially. And every night, and we'll just make it, between 8:00 and 8:02 is our nightly bell ring. It's another way for us to stay connected as a town. Mike, you can take the screen back if you need. Do I have to give you that ability? To stay connected, so head outside between 8:00 and 8:02. If you don't have a bell, get creative. I've seen some pots and pans. I've seen some wind chimes. I've seen some people with bells on their phones, whatever works. Let's, you know, any way you can stay connected to your friends and neighbors. So together we will get through this. And I encourage you all to stay safe and stay home. John or Liza, did you have anything else you wanted to share? Ask?
I think just a general thank you to everybody's flexibility. This is, I think, difficult times, right, for everybody and we, as we keep hearing from many sources, we're in, you know, uncharted territory here. So so yeah, so thank you for everybody in sort of sticking with the meeting and sticking with, you know, all the new information and rules and requirements that are kind of coming out on a daily basis. So.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it's important. And if anyone has any comments, questions, suggestions, this is uncharted, like Liza said, for all of us and not just in Wellington, but at the state level as well and our neighbors around the state. So there isn't any question or any suggestion that isn't welcome. You may be thinking of something that we haven't at this point. And so I encourage communication as much as possible. And John, we hope you're still doing well and staying in.
I am.
Good.
And it's really good to see you, John. I missed you at the last meeting. Our last chance to be in person for a little while. Good to see you. Welcome back.
We'll be in person again someday.
Yes, we will.
There. But again, so these meetings will be shared out regularly. This will be the new format. The one thing I didn't mention, we're gonna utilize the same format for all of our town meetings, board and commission meetings that need to meet. So Mike is going to kind of hold the calendar for those meetings. So board chairs will be given that information. They would contact Mike so that we don't have two meetings going on at the same time. So huge, huge thank you to Mike for overseeing all this. I mean, he's got the headset on. He's prepared.
Mission Control.
That's right. So seeing no other business, I will move to adjourn at 7:53.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.